Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five. My name is Don Swanker, Chair of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Sinus. To my right, I have an employee, Jordan from I T, Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann, the Executive Assistant. And first up on the agenda is Jayden Schuck with the County Engineers Office.
Morning, good morning. We have a busy agenda here today. The first thing is to discuss about our Level B and C resolution and subsequently ordinance. So this has been a year in the making, trying to clean up roads within our county that have been historically observed as Level B as far as our maintenance duties, but have not been, there's no documentation, like no resolution saying this road from point A to point B is Level B, and that's throughout the county. So for us to properly sign them for our liability, getting that cleaned up. So I've been working on that. And originally, last week, we talked about setting the public hearing for that resolution of said roads to the twenty second of April. As going through this, I feel like our Level B ordinance and C levels, B ordinance and the Level C ordinance need updating as well. Because there are some things that are lacking in it that other counties use and that actually the D O T has templates for us counties to use as far as Level B and C ordinances. What should be included, all that. Our current, for example, our current Level B one only has about half of the items in there. No regular inspection. It's not stated in there that no regular inspections will occur. No shoulders will be maintained. No crown will be maintained. And that's all in the template that the D O T provides or standard verbiage that D O T provides in most all counties use. So in my mind, as we go through this and up clean up these roads are Level B, I feel like we should also have our ordinance cleaned up as part of that. And I want, it's my intent to have the ordinance passed first before we have the resolution on the roads. Because the ordinance state, the ordinance for them is stating what our maintenance responsibilities are on those roads. The resolution is just simply stating which roads are B and C. So I want the ordinance updated before we do the roads. So that's what spurred all this here. And with the ordinance, it takes multiple readings of it. So I guess the first thing I'd want to do, talking with Lisa is to rescind our, from last meeting, rescind the motion of the public hearing for our B and C resolution, rescind that from April twenty second.
Good.
Are you gonna do a motion for your work session or not?
Well, this, see, the way I would like to proceed, and we talked a little bit, is I agree, I would like the ordinance set in stone before we proceed with the resolution, stating which road you're gonna talk about. And so to me, the resolution stuff should almost just be stopped. Then we do the ordinance stuff, and then we can come back and do the resolution for designated roads after.
I still would like a work session on that.
Absolutely, work session.
Obviously, we need something to look at to approve an ordinance. We need something, an ordinance to see first.
Yeah, and I was gonna get you that this week.
Well, yeah, but I'm not so sure that I can make a decision in four days and.
Well, you don't have to. That's why we wanna have the work session on the fifteenth. Nothing's decided on that. Then you would actually, it wouldn't be till like the twenty ninth of April.
Right.
Or possibly later.
What I think Mike would like to see, if we set the fifteenth as a work session for the B and C roads resolution.
Yep.
Will you have a copy of the ordinance there?
Yes, yep.
So we'll have a copy of the ordinance and a copy of the, so to me, this needs to, a work session on not resolution, just Level Bs and C roads.
Yeah, that works.
And then we can have the ordinance we can look at. We can have the resolution, what, what roads you're designating, and then we can chew on that. And from there, we proceed. To me, the resolution stops until the ordinance is set in the, passed and it's solid and it's, it's, it's law.
So just so I'm clear, we're talking two ordinance, right?
Yes, no, ordinance and a resolution.
On each road, B, one for B, one for C, right?
Uh.
They're not the same priorities.
No, but I think if you have an ordinance on B and C, there'll be a section on Level B roads, a section on Level C roads in the ordinance. So they should be able to be handled.
Two ordinances.
Two ordinance, okay.
Level B has its own and Level C has its own. So there'll be two ordinances on that. And then the resol, there'll be two resolution. Don't know if I have a second resolution, one for sure for the Level Bs, but all of our Level Cs have actually been, from what I'm finding so far, have been documented really well, because they have been set by resolution, our Level Cs. Our Bs are the ones that are lacking. But, well, let's, we'll need a Level C resolution, because some of those are not correctly stated in the limits where the Level C is stated to where the gates and all that are signed.
Okay, so first of all, what did we do? We, we made a resolution. Did you want to rescind that resolution? Is that correct?
Well, we didn't have a.
We've set a public hearing.
Rescind the motion.
So we're not prepared for that yet. So you rescind the public hearing?
Rescind the motion for setting the public hearing. That was originally said it for.
You made a motion to set a public hearing for a certain date.
That was done last week.
Yeah, what's the date of the public hearing?
So my motion, so I would say that the motion be to rescind the motion to set the date of April twenty second, twenty twenty five at nine AM for a public hearing on Level B and Level C countywide road designation in Jackson County. So you're rescinding that motion that you're not going to have the public hearing on.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That we're not having a public hearing. I would make that motion.
I would second that.
We got a motion to rescind the setting of the, or the, the public hearing on April twenty second at nine AM as far as the Level B and Level C road designations in Jackson County. Is that pretty much it in a nutshell?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, now.
So with that, we should probably, we don't necessarily need a motion for setting a work session, but I would, I guess I don't know if we do, but I would like to have a work session next week where I could.
There are two, wait a minute, there are two work sessions next week. One is for, um, Linay at ten forty-five. What's the one at nine? There's one at like nine o'clock or something in there?
There's one on the Pioneer Cemetery Commission.
Yeah.
And on Linay.
So we have two public hearings next week.
There are two work sessions.
There are two work sessions.
So you want to push the work session to the twenty second, then we'll push all this back?
Back, I think I, this timeline, it to me is, it's not, it's set in sand right now, and it's really windy. Because again, we're gonna need to space it out, pass the ordinances, and then we can proceed with the resolution. And therefore, so, yeah, the work session, I think we can do the twenty second. Is there anything big on that date that you know of, Linay?
No, I think that should be a public hearing for the budget.
Yeah, the budget, but that shouldn't be too long.
That shouldn't take, but.
Yeah, so we'll set a, a work session at the end of the meeting on the twenty second to discuss this.
We've got a public hearing at ten o'clock on the budget.
Yep.
And we've got Laura Elam coming at the end of the meeting, so there's quite a bit on already on the twenty second. We're running till eleven.
What's Lori coming for?
Twenty already. Lori Elam.
Yeah.
To talk about the changes that are coming to the N S D S.
Okay.
Yes, and it's not like this has to, you know, this has been, the way we currently observe has been observed for years, so it's not like by waiting a couple more weeks is gonna be detrimental. I just wanna get it wrapped up, but.
So here's the thing, I mean, again, next week, you got a couple of work sessions. Are they lengthy? I mean, we can have a work session and do it limit to twenty minutes and say, hey, we'll have another one.
Yeah.
Start a start discussion.
Well, I'll give you guys the, the documents, and if you do wanna have a work session, if time would allow, we can, or if you, then if it doesn't allow, we have a twenty second.
What's the Pioneer Cemetery work session on?
Um.
At nine o'clock, you said?
No, 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 at ten.
At two.
I don't know exactly what.
Well, I don't, I don't know that.
I would say keep.
That's probably not gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can make it as long or short as we want. It's a work session, so we can talk as long as we want. If someone's got an appointment to be at, we can.
Right now, that work session would be scheduled at like ten thirty.
We don't know what the timeframes are gonna allow.
And what, yeah, and what we're currently doing in the meantime, until this is cleaned up, is for the roads that brought this whole issue up in the first place that are not signed Level B, but have been historically treated as Level B, we are gonna still treat them as, this were passed as Level B until this gets cleaned up. Because I mean, that's where we're headed, I guess, so, um, that's just a little FYI, I guess.
We will have discussion, because I see the last significant rain, we had, they had some fun again on the Level B, so.
So as far as the ordinances, do you want to present those to, you send those out this week?
I'll send those out this week.
And then next week, we can try to figure out when we wanna.
How to set the timeline.
Again, we gotta have a public hearing on the ordinances. So if you said that, we were talking about this, if you said that, if we said it, sent the notice out on the eleventh, it would be posted in the newspaper till the sixteenth, so the earliest we could have a public hearing on the ordinances would be the twenty second.
I don't think we're rushed here, so let's get the ordinance, something we can look at.
We can make all the decisions, or maybe not all, but a good chunk of them next, at next week's board meeting. I'll get you all the information this weekend. Including the maps of where these Bs and Cs are, an updated map, I should say.
I was gonna say, because you're gonna have to print a whole lot of maps, because I know a lot of people use that green map.
Well, you know, a lot of these Level Cs are, they've got trees just big around growing up in them, so they need to be addressed.
Yeah. All right.
So then with waiting until the next meeting, then the earliest you'd be able to do anything would be the twenty minute.
Correct.
Yes.
All right.
So.
Does that care, care of all that? First, A, B, C, D, and E and F?
It sure does.
Moving on to the bridge.
So this one, I'm gonna recommend tabling until next meeting. I was hoping I'd have all the D O T and contractor approvals on all of that in order for today, but that hasn't happened.
You just wanna table it? So if we don't get it, you don't have, we don't have to retable it? Or I guess.
It's just gospel, actually. We don't need to table it.
We don't need to do anything.
Works for me. I, I was just hoping, I put it on there just in event, would I get all the approvals that presented today, but that's not the case, so we'll push it back.
Yeah, discussion and no act.
There we go.
Moving on to dump trucks.
Yes, the big stuff, I guess, today. So last week, we received bids on dump trucks and the dump bodies, as we do every year. Um, the trucks, we've got, it was fairly competitive on the trucks, well, it was fairly competitive.
That, yesterday, I'm sorry, Jayden, we don't have a copy of that, right?
I got one copy, I guess that kind of, you don't even make copies this quick?
Or you just say, oh.
We didn't make us into bids.
That's.
I'll go make copies real quick.
There'll be a lot of you scared then of asking me for them.
Is this the last hard frosted, or you think we got some more coming?
I would say this is probably the, the last twenties, you know, low twenties.
Farming community would be active, active after this.
By chance, did you talk to John on that Fairboy lease about that verbiage you wanna put in with that one there?
Yeah, so now that you should. A new email was wanted. It all.
Thank you.
Nineteen D?
So bids on the dump trucks and the dump bodies. A little bid for the trucks was Ascendence Truck Group, which are our international provider. They were Thompson Truck. They changed names. And for our dump bodies was Bonnell, who we have awarded the dump body last year, too. Uh, so the trucks are all can be available summer, this upcoming summer, summer twenty five. Any of the dump bodies, no matter which provider you have, are out till fall of twenty six. So a year and about nineteen months from now is when they're all out till. Uh, so the trucks, we come in and say this summer, uh, and we, if we were to take anything on trade, they would take the trade vehicle on their truck chassis provider would take the trade when they bring the new chassis. But, and so we'd have the new chassis, but the box couldn't get put on until next fall, so we'd be sitting a year with a truck that we can't use. Trucks that we couldn't use, um, which we've experienced that this past year. Uh, this past winter, we had a, for fiscal year twenty five, the one truck, it came in this past summer, and the dump body doesn't get put on until this upcoming summer, this July it'll get put on. So this past year, we experienced where we just had one truck we couldn't use. Uh, so that left us with basically, we had one spare available where one truck gets broke down, we have one truck that can be supplemented, fill a spot, and everything go fine. With, with these bids here, if we were to, part of the bids, they listed the two trucks, their trade value, what we listed the two trucks for, our trade trucks. I feel like one truck, they're giving us a really good price on, even as opposed, when you look at auction prices, with that year, that mileage group or like a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand miles, for, from the twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen of that International seventy four hundred series, which that's what the trade vehicle is, um, the average auction price here around twenty two thousand. And that, for the one truck, they're, would offer us thirty four, I just feel like we would, at auction, you'd, in order for us to profit thirty four thousand on auction, it'd have to bring like thirty eight thousand, because you know, there's auction fees. I really don't feel like for that truck that, that would happen for us, so I, it's my recommendation that we award the truck, the two trucks to Ascendence Truck Group, um, and trade, give them the trade of the three one six four, and we keep three one five two for ourselves, and we'll list at auction when, by doing that, we would be in the same situation this upcoming winter as we were this last year. We have only one spare available, um, and not two, but I'm talking with Rick and Stacy in the past. It's like, there, have there been years where we needed two spares? Yes, but they're few and far between. I guess you could certainly keep both vehicles as spares, but you're gonna be losing out, I most likely losing out on what could be seventeen or fifteen thousand dollars on that trade, because it's likely not, it's gonna bring what they're offering us on trade, if we're to auction it.
I don't think we sit there on two trucks. I mean, if we have one spare, you know, we have to deal with it. I just deal with it. I, I, and the problem I have is, and I don't know, you've talked to suppliers, and you've talked to them, and obviously you know better than what we do, but I have a problem with, if I bought a new truck, that I gotta drive in the yard every day and look at it, and I can't drive it, you know? I mean, there are funds that we're sitting there looking at every day. I would hate to drive in my yard at home and look at a new truck and not be able to get in.
Will the dump body off one of these old trucks work on the new one for a little while? So the old truck is it?
With an adapter plate. Well, you'd have to, we don't have the capabilities to switch dump bodies. You'd have to take it somewhere and spend quite a bit of money to outfit it, which it may not work. Especially on our old ones, because as we start to get the stainless bodies, like other counties, our new ones are all stainless now. Like the one that's gonna be coming in for this July, we awarded last year, and the two that are good this time are stainless. Other counties will take their old bodies and put them on their other trucks, but they do it in-house. They have hoists and cranes and all that stuff, where we don't. So, and answer your question, I don't think it's, maybe at some point, anything's possible, but is feasible, probably not.
And from what I gather from the emails, the only way you can order a dump box is to have a truck, or at least a purchase, purchase order on a truck?
Mm-hmm, because they can't guarantee, like, if you, because I brought it up, okay, what if we don't do the, we don't award the trucks, but award the dump bodies and just wait next year to award trucks? Uh, they've all stated with supply chain, like, there's a lot of unknowns. Like, we just got out of the whole COVID situation where trucks were two years out. It's starting to stabilize, but now with the tariffs, there's a lot of unknowns, so truck providers can't guarantee, if we were to go to bid next year, that trucks would be available next summer. And then the dump body, without having a truck guaranteed, our slot isn't guaranteed either. It, it would also get pushed back. So you, you'd have to have the trucks ready to go, so.
Well, then, i- it's, it's ridiculous that they can hold us hostage for a year and a half. And that's in effect what it sounds like.
It is, I, I.
You know, we're sitting here, that's a sizable expenditure for the county to sit on and not be able to use, plus it's wasting a year warranty.
Well, I did clarify, it's not wasting a year, because I, I thought that same thing. They, warranty does not hit till the bodies are put on and is ready for the roll. So we would not lose out on the year of warranty.
For the truck?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, I mean, again, it's tough to use it before we start using it, you know, and it's sitting there, the varmints are getting accustomed to sitting in it, and.
Facilities are better than that.
If you don't use it every day or move it, things get.
But I guess if you, but, all right, if you don't award it, you're in the same boat, though. You still don't get a truck till next year, so, and the prices could be higher, because you're waiting another year to bid, so.
So, if we trade both off, we don't have a spare. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, and that, I've talked with Rick, I do not want that.
Right.
And I know.
Because the spare will be sitting there without a box, basically. If we traded both trucks off, we're getting trucks in, and they won't have a box, so.
So they're, you.
So they're no good.
Because our dump body provider.
My car.
They could drive it around. Because the dump body providers also have the, give us the plows and the spreaders, all that, so it's literally just the truck, like Mike said, you can just only drive, so useless.
So Jayden, is there, is there a, a lot of difference comparable to either one of these trade-ins? I mean, you're okay with keeping the lower value truck, it runs good, it's a decent truck yet, or what?
Yeah, so the three ones.
Are we gonna have problems and not be able to use it?
No, because the, the three one five two, it's an older truck, because, so the one five and the one six and those numbers are to represent the year of the truck.
Okay.
So it's one year older, but it's got, uh, like seventy thousand less miles on it, because the three one six four was, came from our Sterling shed, which historic, through the years he's had the truck, he's got longer haul routes to his quarries and all that, so he puts on more miles. So we're getting rid of the higher mileage one and keeping the one with less mileage.
Okay.
Good.
So I don't have any concerns, no, with keeping the three one five two as a spare.
Isn't any of these two numbers that indicate the make of the truck or the model, or?
No, it's because I.
Internationals, what are they?
They're both internationals, both seventy four hundred series internationals.
They're almost identical year apart.
Yeah, I think the only difference in one, when talking with Sean, that they're, one is pre-def, and the other one's post-def. And I'm not a mechanical person, so I know what death generated, but I don't know which one.
I think that would probably be the one you're keeping, as the older one would be the pre-def, my guess.
Probably, so I wonder, because I, I question like, why is it such different? I mean, I get the mileage is higher, but it's quite a bit different, but it sounds like it's due to the depth, but, so I do.
Well, that don't seem like a lot of money, you know, you can't, I, I don't, I don't know that I'd get rid of the box on the truck for that kind of money, you know, it.
Well, and I, I look like. Uh, I mean, so for example, Clinton County put their trucks on big iron, they had trucks going big iron last year, and they only brought, I think, I wanna say it was right around sixteen thousand. I mean, and like I said, the average when I looked is right around twenty two, so.
Are you looking for a motion here, or what are you looking for?
I think we're, so you're looking for a motion to approve the two, purchase of the two tandem axle trucks per specifications for the three forty-one seven ninety-eight?
So yes, the first one would be to, I wanna, my first recommendation is to award the two trucks perspex to Ascendence Truck Group for the two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, and then also, uh, recommend that they take the trade, uh, the three one six four.
As the trade.
As the trade for the thirty four thousand dollars that they'll give us.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve purchase of tandem axle, two pers, tandem axle trucks per specifications to Ascendence for a total of two hundred ninety-six thousand dollars and trade, uh, truck number thirty one sixty-four. Is that right?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then following that, uh, Bonnell, the dump body, they were quite a bit lower, but they met all of our spec on everything, so.
Bonnell or Bonnell?
Bonnell. Um, so, and again, they're all the providers are fall of twenty six, so, um, my recommendation is to award the dump bodies perspex to Bonnell for the two six four, two one nine, and fourteen cents, and not do any of the alternates.
Okay, I got a question. So these chassis and these body, dump body, are they starting to get, I mean, interactive, retro, uh, is there a standard? Are they all still different? I mean, can I take one from a national, international and put it on a P, or can I, you know?
I would have to ask somebody more mechanically inclined than myself. I don't know how they attach the jet, I know the bodies are all generally, they, they're on the bottom, the end gate, uh, the spreaders up in front of the drive wheels.
I just wanted, if the standard, if the system is gonna get standardized and also even competitive, I would think it had to be somewhat.
I just don't know, I don't know how they mount to the chassis.
Now is not what we've been getting except for last year, correct?
Correct, it's historically been Monroe the last eight years. Prior to that, it was Henderson, so we've kinda got a mixture of some, so I guess.
I just can't see a manufacturer making a specific box for International, or GMC, or Freightliner, or whatever it might be. Something's almost got to be standardized, and they're, they ain't gonna have several different lines running dump boxes, I.
That I'd.
Yeah, but if they keep them all different, then when you get a different truck, you have to get a different box.
But that's a lot more cost I would take to the manufacturer to say, I got ten different specifications, you know?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I, and I don't know how they attach to the chassis, or how the chassis are exactly shaped, because I know as part of our spec, they have to work with the each provider, so I don't know.
We should, we should have a, especially with your dump box people, and see how that's going, how the future lays out here. I mean, if we're waiting a year and a half for a box, you know, we gotta look into, there's local people with cranes and, and facilities to pull these trucks in and lift that whole box up and back under it and set it down, you know?
Yeah, and there's the spreaders, all the electrical wires and.
I mean, you got stainless steel box, that's a main component here. It's like stainless steel, now it's supposed to be here forever, you know, or whatever you want, once forever.
And all of these were quoting a stainless box, whether it was Monroe or?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And that's just for corrosion purpose, or is that?
Yeah, but, yeah.
And weight, not, not there's heavy.
Oh. Probably aluminum, I'd say that, but I don't know about stainless is heavy as steel.
Yeah, I don't know as far as, I don't know what the weight would be, but they do last, or not as corro, or the salt stuff in it is not as corrosive to it as just regular steel.
And again, do they make a regular steel? I mean, they make a C ten or a Corten, whatever it was that we were doing at one time. I mean, you know, they last us ten years, obviously, the box will do, do they have to be stainless? I mean, if they're the price difference, I, I don't know. I mean, it'd be something I can't do.
Yeah, I guess I don't know, I'd have to, again, I'm not the most mechanically inclined person to answer some, I'd have to ask more questions.
No doubt.
So where are we at with the dump box?
Uh, just a warning, my recommendation is to award to Bonnell for their amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and fourteen cents, and not do any of the alternatives. Hello, Mike?
We don't, can I ask a question?
Yep.
We don't like the alternatives, because.
So talking with Sean, when we sent these out, wanted to list, so the demolition end gate, which is ultimate one, that's more where the tailgate actually, I don't know how, where the whole tailgate like lifts up. It's not just hinged on the, the top where it flaps open, it's more, it completely opens up, yeah. And just, because he's like, well, if you guys are gonna do more brushing that, uh, might be some, at least get a price on what it would be. Bonnell doesn't offer on theirs, Monroe and Henderson do, but it's quite a bit more for like, okay, we really have that much benefit out of it, so scrap that one. The alternate tube is our spreader control, which is in the truck for hitting the spreaders that spread the, uh, sand and salt mixture. Um, we improved it this year, our base, we increased our spec this year to be the SSC fifty-one hundred series, which is what most all other counties use anymore. It's more, you can set your rates of what you apply, your mixture, so many tons per mile, and it adjusts based on the speed of the truck, so if it's a little faster, it's more slow down, it's slow. And so I didn't know what that upgrade would cost, so it's like, well, let's see, let's, as an alternate, let's go back to our spreader that we've currently been using for the past how many years, just to see what that cost difference is in the event. Would it be fifteen thousand dollars? Ooh, jeez, we wanna do that. So that's that alternative. Would it be fifteen thousand dollars? Ooh, geez, we want to do that. So that's what that alternate two is, but it's not much at all, so it's like. Uh, that's why I listed the two alternates, just to see what the pricing is, so we're not committed to it, or gives us the option.
It might save you that just on how much you apply, you know, cost-wise. You know, with the speed regulated one or the one you want to go to, so.
And it still gives us the option where if it's a really hilly area and you want to, they call blast, yep, this still gives us that option to where. Okay, we need to apply it thick here, because it's hill, still gives us that option, but when you're just going down most of your roads, you can set it to it properly.
Okay.
So that's what the two alternates are, but given the prices on it and the benefit, I just don't, I recommend not doing any of the alternates, just the boxes only.
I'll second your motion.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve purchase from Bonnell of two dump bodies per specifications per a total of two hundred sixty-four thousand. Two hundred nineteen dollars and fourteen cents, and not to proceed with any of the alternates, one or two. Any other discussion?
Yes, just one, under these rate compared to your estimates.
So the, the trucks were under my estimate, and the body was a little bit over. So with taking, in the sense, the trade, I also in my equipment line item for fiscal twenty-six, I included some. Compensation value from our two trade trucks, uh, which. I was about right in the middle where they gave us for trades. The long story short, when you take the base bid for each, let me just. Awarded and. Take the one on trading, we're basically right even with where I budgeted it for, so. In the grand scheme and all of those, so we're actually sitting really good.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, utility permit for McCoqueta Valley Electric, um, this one's simple, it's underneath Bellevue Cascade Road, they just want to pour. Um, a service underneath to, uh, the person who will be having an entrance permit here following this, so. Just pour underneath the road, pretty straightforward, I don't see any issues, so I recommend approval on that one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve underground utility permit for McCoqueta Valley Electric Cooperative in Richland Township. Section twenty-three Bellevue Cascade Road. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, so last, following that is an entrance permit for Kaffir Properties, um, it is. Existing driveway out there, and they are still wanting it to be a field entrance, because I verified, they're not building, at least not yet. Uh, but they're spending more time out there, so that for whatever reason, they require electrical service, and as part of that. Um, need to issue the nine-one-one address for that electrical service, and. The owner stated they're gonna be doing more or spending more time on that property, so just like we've done up with other ones where it's field entrance or. Entrance into a forty acre parcel of timber where the next thing were to happen, at least they have an address to where it can be located, so I see no issues with that, so. This entrance permit is for an existing entrance, uh, meets all the site distance. Um, it's already got a call over. Just an existing one, so really looking just for simple addresses is what the main point of it is, so.
So they did extend that call over either?
Nope. And they're not looking to widen it either, or the entrance, just simply just get it addressed.
There's a fair amount of activity there.
I don't know what. I I thought they maybe were gonna build the way it kind of seemed to me, but from what I've been told, it's not the case.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve entrance permit for Kaffir Properties in Richland Township, section twenty-three Bellevue Cascade Road. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Well, just a quick update, and then I'm done, uh, construction has started on Z thirty-four. No, went back and forth, we're gonna start on the seventh or the tenth, but it was gonna be this week, but they did start yesterday on our bridge approach work for Z thirty-four, so. Road closed as of yesterday. Uh, pair outs going really well. Plan is to actually report back Thursday or Friday, depending on weather. And then there's cure time, of course, but. Still looking at that, probably two week closure, could be decreased possibly, but just be safe, two week closure, and then asphalt is scheduled. To start the base widening for the shoulder work, prior to asphalt is scheduled to start the twenty-first of April, so we're gonna go right from bridge approach, right?
Okay, so, uh, so even after the bridge approaches and the bridge is open. You got nowhere to go unless they can still get through, so is it gonna be one lane?
When they do the base widening stuff, yes, it'll be one lane, still be able to get through, but it was one lane with pilot car.
Okay. From that on, from the opening of the bridge, it will be one lane, whether it be one mile, two mile, whatever it is.
Yep, and as they start to work. With their asphalt operations, like on the main line. To the bridge approach where the guardrail is, there will be some restricted width signing requirements that they'll follow at that time, because it's, there won't be much working or or. With for the travel cars, or like semi.
And which end are they starting the overlay on?
Uh, don't know, most likely, I don't know. I don't know, but most likely to start at the Preston, from City Preston and work north.
And are they set up at Welling? Or?
Welling or Preston, right, yes, they're setting up a plant down there. So real short haul distance. Yeah, it's scheduled to start the twenty-first, weather pending, but road will be open, but for them.
It's just gonna make it tight for. Emerson farm work.
Once they work, or when they're working right in the vicinity of the bridge, like. When they're working in Preston's, towards Preston city limits, no, but as they get towards the bridge, yes.
Well, there isn't gonna be a deterrent no matter what, so people beware, be patient, please.
Yeah, like, although it seems to be very cooperative as far as the closure, there's been a few questions, but I think. The notice thankfully for the paper, and I'm sure it's been on the radio, and a roadification, people have been aware of it, so it hasn't been.
Along with improvement comes a little pain.
That's how I view it anyways.
Yep.
Reclaim?
Uh, they're, they're going, they started.
And where they started, when they were starting?
So they've kind of been all, spread out, they started on the north end where some roads are. As some of our roads are, the, where they're sitting on bluff, and there's really not much to reclaim, but it's just touching them up and put some rock down. They did that in northern areas already, uh, they started actually over, uh, they called Seven Hills Road, was it two, uh, twenty-third maybe? And they connect sixty-four to Codfish, they started on that one, and to be finished up this today, actually, on that. Uh, so. Gotten started on it, thankfully.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jayden?
Not that I have, sorry, took a bit of time to think.
We appreciate it, sir.
Thanks.
Next up, we got visitors and citizens, is there anybody online or in, in the room that would like to address the board today? Moving on, next, we have Lori with zoning for a departmental update.
Morning.
Guys, how's it going? Um, our first, well, our item we have is an approval of trust subdivision. And section, well, part of section twenty-nine, part of section twenty-eight of Bellevue Township. They have met the, the plan, the survey meets all the requirements on our checklist, do you want me to read from the individually or not? But they. It meets our, meets the requirements, we have, um, um. An approval from the city of Bellevue, since it's within two miles of their city. Um, and pretty much what this is, they didn't change the shape of this, of this subdivision. It is the same shape as it was, other than they cut some pieces inside of the subdivision to change the shape.
So I'm assuming they're gonna access that from four twenty-ninth, not fifty-two, correct?
Oh, most certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, that access did not change.
Right.
That access was there to begin with.
Right.
Well, I see they're thirteen acre section.
This is, now, this is a surveyed, of a surveyed survey, of a surveyed survey, at least I'm not exaggerating.
No, they've had significant amount.
There's, there's been a lot of movement in here, um. And.
Yeah.
But it it's, it meets all of our requirements, like I said, the footprint, the overall shape did not change.
I see, four twenty-ninth, I just see there one.
I mean, I, I viewed it and I don't have.
Yeah, and it's like, but it, the, the footprint is not changing. That the access didn't change.
Four twenty-nine is good, that one. No. Yeah, that's the one I see, I was just looking for the other one.
Um, that, what he has highlighted is gonna be pulled in with the, with the part to the east.
Part to the east.
What, what's lit up is parcel D, that's gonna be combined with the new parcel.
Got you, all right.
Uh, and you're looking for a motion to approve that?
Yes.
Resolution number eleven.
Eleven ten.
Ten. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Nan, to approve resolution eleven ten dash oh four dash oh eight dash twenty twenty-five. The resolution approving final plot of trust subdivision for a minor subdivision of Jackson County. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You, um. Talk to Rebecca about my.
I saw the, I saw the email, and I have a phone number now, I didn't have a few minutes ago, but I have. Okay, so I should have a good phone number, but it turns out it's not a good phone number, I'll recheck.
Yeah.
So, all right, I'll just sit in the back for a little bit, okay, guys?
Please.
Good morning, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April first, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith, unauthorized publication in the official newspaper.
Okay.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike.
Agenda?
Yeah. To approve April first, twenty twenty-five board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized, authorized publication in the official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants for the publication of the claims listing. And a minus six hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, twenty-four cent.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike, to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants and publication of the claims listing in the amount of six hundred sixteen thousand. Eight hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, just note that there's a three hundred and roughly nine or ten thousand dollar bond payment that goes to the jail, if I'm not mistaken. There's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for nine-one-one, do we know what that was?
E N S for radios.
Okay.
So improvements to all.
That was a, that was a bulk of the expenditures I've done there. So any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So just for clarity, that was three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And that is money that we collected, we do have a debt service levy, that debt levy. And that is, um, what we've collected from our taxpayers here in Jackson County to pay off our bond for the early. We don't want to be late with that payment, so we'd rather be early than late. So, um, my final thing then is, are we at a point where we're ready to move forward with the lease or the fairgrounds? Well, I know that a correction or something came through from John this morning.
This morning, and the only change that happened to it was on nineteen B. It says any outside entity desiring construction or building on the fairgrounds, including any modification to existing buildings or structures. And that's the big thing, that including any modification to existing buildings or structures must first take the petition to the fair tenant, fair board. For determined, determination consistent with their management of the grounds. That was the only change of the, that was presented, so.
Okay, and I, I still have a question on five C. Um, so it's clear in the middle of that paragraph that the tenant shall make all repairs, replacements, improvements. Um. Proved by the landlord. If I read that lingo right. And that we are in agreement that our responsibility or our commitment. Uh, is denying not to exceed ninety thousand, that includes the insurance premiums. Um, and or improvements that they want to do is still brought to this board, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we're all in agreement. Uh, my other question would be on the insurance, it says, the tenant, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's the way it is. Then the tenant agrees, I know the tenant gives you insurance, and we supplement them for that, is it, is it? To our benefit, if we get your insurance, will we get a better rate?
No, that's where we went through all that, that, it just didn't seem to work out that way.
The insurance company didn't.
Yeah, I can't remember how we left.
They'll settle back to this way.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, yeah, I'd say we are, they're not, or.
Do we, is there a motion?
I guess my, I guess my question then is, do I have a motion to approve unauthorized chair signature on the lease with the Jackson County Fair Association? For property located at twelve twelve East Corey Street, McCoqueta, from, is it January first? I didn't know what date to put in.
I don't know what retro was either.
I would, I would probably say January first, because that's roughly when we started paying the premium.
Okay, so January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So to be clear, it's a three-year lease and it will be reviewed. Not fifty like you're probably.
Correct.
I would make that motion, yes.
I would second that.
All right, you want to read that motion again?
I need a motion to approve unauthorized chair signature on the lease with the Jackson County Fair Association. For property located at twelve twelve East Corey Street, McCoqueta, from January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all that I have for the morning today.
Now, they will, the fair board should vote on it this week, if there's any changes, it'll have to come back before us.
Right.
All right. Lynn, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Calendar for this week. Uh, three thirty this afternoon is a McCoqueta River Watership Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April ninth, at nine AM is Mike's turn on Just Talk, okay, make you. At one o'clock tomorrow is a zero to five in sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for Nan. At four PM is the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting in the community room for any of you that want to attend that. Um, I tentatively have it down as the date for the Ports of Eastern Iowa Authority, but I have no confirmation of that. At five thirty tomorrow is the ECIA special meeting in Dubuque by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, April tenth at eleven AM, it's a Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. And also a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom for any of you. Monday, April fourteenth, at seven thirty AM, is an Early Childhood Iowa Executive Committee meeting in Dewitt. Or by Zoom for Nan. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, April fifteenth, at nine AM. That afternoon at five PM, um, is a conservation board meeting in Hurstville for any of you.
What's, what's the other, Monday is a conservation? I don't have.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Yeah. Hey, um, only business, other business I have today is discussion, possible action on. An appointment or two appointments to the zoning commission, we have two terms that are expiring. On the sixteenth of April. Um, I gave you the, the list there, both of those people have reapplied. And in addition, we have three other applicants in the zoning commission. So you have all of those applications also in your packet. Um, you've met, um, two of them earlier that were in here, and there's another applicant that just applied it, and she's in here today to meet you, so. Um, we'll talk to her first before we.
Would you like to approach the board?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, oh, I'll introduce myself, I'm Jody Meyer, um, I live on Highway sixty-seven, just south of Sebelon. Um, my husband and his family are lifelong Jackson County residents, and his ninety-six-year-old grandma still lives in the farmhouse that Dad grew up in. Um, I am a twelve-year member of the inaugural Eastern Valley School Board, um. I have three kids, my youngest is a senior this year, so I plan to exit the school board this year, just because my kids are all out. Make wonderful things happen, um, as a member of the school board, I've been involved in two building projects over the years, one to renovate the elementary and another to make renovations on the high school.
Any questions for Jody?
I, no, I, we appreciate your interest and your willingness to serve, I guess, that's, I think we appreciate you applying and. And. Being, being available.
Alright.
That goes for all, I mean, it's nice to have.
Yeah, it's.
It's bad, but it's nice to have five applicants in here, so.
Thoughts from the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, do you have any comments?
I do.
Come on back up.
Alright. Okay, so you guys know you're gonna have a new zoning administrator, the position coming open sometime this year.
Is that an announcement?
No, that'll come later this month.
Or should, I don't like.
But anyway, so I don't know what it would look like to have, we already have one new member on the zoning commission. We gonna have a new zoning administrator coming up this year. Okay, so one new zoning commission member, two new zoning commission members, three new zoning commission members, and not good leaders or new leadership from administration, um, we have, I, I have, we have some tried and truths, so that's why I'm bringing it up, Monica's been on the commission for many years. Um, she understands the role of the zoning commission, she understands their duties and responsibilities. She's willing to vote against things that she personally doesn't agree with, because it's the right, you know, cause it's the balance of things to do. Um, um, Mary, she's been on the commission now for, I don't remember if it's two years, two years. So she's, she's climbing the learning curve, she's, she's closer to being, you know, having, having enough behind her to know what's, what's going on, there is a learning curve. The one thing I would also encourage you guys to do, there's a lot of boards and commissions at our county, and several have vacancies right now. Why this commission? If you wanna serve the county, there's other things, so what is your reasoning for wanting to join this commission? Cause I know there's some soapbox people applying for this commission, um, and so it's like, why, why this commission? But anyway, that's all I have.
So is that, uh, are you making a recommendation, is that what you're saying, or what, what's that all come down to?
I'm saying we have two qualified members currently serving. And if I had the right to make a recommendation, I would recommend that they stay.
Thoughts from the board?
Oh, again, Don, I, I'm, I'm delighted to see this many applicants, I, you know, we have some really qualified individuals here and willing to serve, and I guess, I, I go back to the last time, I, I, I don't like kicking people off, if you will, and they've served for X amount of time, and, and they're doing their due diligence, and it's hard to say. I mean, if, if I had, it's something like a good employee to me, you know, I would get rid of a good employee, because I gotta maybe a better one or what, same qualified person standing next to them, you know, so, I don't know, it's hard to.
In light of foreshadowing, and the fact that we have kind of a tedious road coming ahead, we're just getting through the wind ordinance with, uh, battery storage, data, data mining, solar and, and several things, some experience is beneficial.
Well, yeah, I mean, the zoning, uh, the wind ordinance was an animal form, that's for sure, and they withheld that and stood with it, so.
Yeah. Thoughts? Reclamation, recommendation motion?
I guess again, I wanna thank everybody that applied and, and to, and to, uh, and to, uh, thank them all again, and, and not lose heart, and again, like, like Lori said, there's several positions in the county we hope we can keep filled, so. I, I would make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mary Keys and Monica McHugh to the zoning board, zoning commission.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to reappoint Mary Keys and Monica McHugh to the zoning board. Any other discussion? And with that, again, I don't know how we can state this enough, the, 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 the quality and number of applicants is, is is, is kind of awe-inspiring, it's, it's, it's not something, but, um.
The pay is.
And they're all good applicant, I mean, the pay.
Quality.
The pay, the pay is good, I guess that's what it makes us, I'm like.
Yeah.
So, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And Jody, Lori, Austin, please, if there's anything else that we can try to encourage you or entice you with to participate with the county, we'd really appreciate it, um, it's just, we lack, we lack, it's a weird problem to have, so, uh, thank you very much for your application. Anything else? Luann, you're, you're, uh.
That was it.
Alright.
She left.
She's just walking away like, I was like, alright, since she's done, I've said my piece and counted it three. Alright, uh, boards and commissions. Anything?
I thank you both for, and all of you for holding this for down on my extended absence.
It was impressively quiet.
I asked several if they missed me, and everybody said no, so I guess that's okay.
You were going, what?
You were here.
Alright, with that.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you all have a great day.